Morning, everybody. We're going to start our meeting with the pleasure of allegiance. We're going to have our guest, Kevin Foyle. Peter Shaw.
I'd like to be in civilized, United States, America, and to be political, which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August 3rd, 2023 Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting. In attendance in the room, we have Captain Walsh. We have Aisha Chuck Sales. We have Rayla.
What'd you say?
Aisha.
How'd you say my last name?
The sales.
Okay, there you go.
Did I say it wrong?
Oh, yeah. First time you did.
I don't feel bad with a name like Churchill.
Hey, come on.
We have Chuck Nickerson. We have Drew Gates, Allison Kevakoski. We have Kevin Foyle, Commissioner Godu. And we have a guest, ex-commissioner.
Warren.
Kevin Foyle here in the room. And Zoom, we have Jason Smith. We have Jason Henry. We have former Commissioner Tom Tom Morello. We have Kathy Stacy. Who did I miss? Robin Brown, RAC, and did I mention New Weyman too, right? In the deck. And that's what we have. So we're going to start with the RFP openings. Supply and install P B D low rate vertical.
And we've authorized the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second, motion been made. And second, is there any discussion? If not on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for Shake 33 3.0 dental digital x-ray sensors.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Well, here's our motion been made. Seconded, is there any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu, yes. I vote yes. Award for custom hinge door memory boxes, long-term care services.
I moved to award the proposal for custom hinge door memory boxes to custom display designs incorporated for an amount not to exceed $11,572.91 as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion been made. And seconded, is there any discussion?
I just, yes. Jason, can you just give us some background about how you chose this vendor? Other bids? What's special about these particular boxes and the funding source and how it came to be to get those?
Sure, absolutely. So through our customer service satisfaction surveys, it was commented through family members that it would be nice for us to have memory boxes for our residents in our assisted living community and also in our memory care neighborhood. It helps residents with understanding where their room is at. It kind of creates familiarity to where identification on where rooms are. And also some personal meaning conversational piece. With that being said, we went out to the resident council and we talked to the resident council group. If this was something that they would be interested in supporting, they agreed with that. And so then we looked at different types of styles of different boxes. We researched five different ones. We want to make sure that they were secure, safe, that they want to be able to be ripped off the wall, that the glass would not be broken easily. So it's acrylic paint. They're lockable, so things won't be removed from the boxes. So these are really nice memory boxes that are really designed to last for a long time. And they're safe for safe keepings of personal belongings in them. So that will be attached outside of the resident room. There's a shelf in there, so someone will have the top piece and the bottom. And then it will create an activity for the residents and the family members to help design those. So it will be part of a community outreach effort to create some involvement with that. So that's the goal of that. With that being said, that was pretty much the reason why we selected this style. We were open for others through the RFP. But this is what we came back with, and only one person made the bid. The funding will be coming out of the resident's special fund account. The residents wanted to pursue this, and so there we are.
Further questions? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, Motorola equipment, Sheriff's Office.
I move to award the proposal for Motorola equipment to two-way communications Motorola front of not not to exceed $47,836.89 as recommended by the high chef.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Can you tell me about the other bids or?
I think they weren't. They weren't all the bids.
Is this pretty much?
Yeah, because Motorola really has the, I mean, everybody's buying Motorola. Nothing can really beat Motorola. We actually use two-way communications right in Rockingham County. That way if we have a problem, whatever, we're right there. So it's been like that for years that Motorola always gets it. And that's most police agencies use Motorola.
Is it sole source or is it?
It's, we do not sole source. We went out to bed.
I'm just asking.
Our cord is Motorola. It connects best with our radio cord.
Right. Further questions? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I like the consensus.
I move to first move to approve the July 27th, 2023 public and non-public moving minutes.
Right here, sir. Have a motion on it. Or is there any additions, attractions, improvements, anything like that? Just track. If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. To payroll.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of $1,568,935.22 for the period ended July 29th, 2023.
Second, motion been made and seconded and discussion?
Not on the. Yes, I have.
Yes, Commissioner Godu?
We're, it's higher this month. Is this a five-week month or something?
No. So what happened was annually, we have the, we allow non-union individuals and those groups, union groups that participate in doing the annual earned time holiday cash out. Or, yeah, so $217,075 plus related payroll expenses. So that's why it's about, you know, more than $200,000 more than a regular payroll that we have could last several.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Further questions? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, liaison updates. I'm going to go with Commissioner Foyle first.
The jail population is at 157 over the weekend. They think it was, they had 32 individuals processed over the weekend. Those are incredibly taxing high numbers and about, I think, just over a half of those individuals were PC'd and out the next day. But everybody still has to be processed through booking and then in, you know, placed in a safe environment. And it was particularly with, you know, with intoxication, tumultuous behavior. So it's very demanding. Obviously, very, very, well, I think it's not so much, it wasn't so much Hampton Beach. I think it's just generally it was, you know, when sometimes we see with the nice weather, people go out in full. Yeah.
Rip it up.
There's a lot of projects going on over at the jail, a lot related to software and IT. And so thank you to Robin and for all of her efforts working with the corrections, but everything is moving well. Over in long-term care, we had, we do have a little bit of a COVID outbreak. We did one positive resident. I'm sorry, one positive staff and two positive residents. So there's question asking just for the next, the next two weeks so that we can make sure there's no further spread. Fortunately, there's been multiple rounds of testing. And so far, that's, those are the only people who have been identified. Good, great things happening in assisted living too. The assisted living facility was voted a finalist for New Hampshire. Top five, one of the top five finalists, so people can vote to choose one of the best assisted living facilities. And they, an example of all the fun they do is they just did a trip to York Beach. Also, in long-term care, we transitioned to the new pharmacy on August 1st of 2020, and that seems to be moving well. And we've got a few things on the agenda for our discussion points for Moody's for finance, otherwise. Finishing the payouts to reconciliations. And now we are finally moving into 20, let's go year 2024.
Thank you. Commissioner Godu?
Yeah, yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I'm really happy with the progress that we're making in the childcare area. Both Jason and Allison have been working hard to get the, get it organized. And unfortunately, we have a meeting this afternoon. Unfortunately, this one meeting, I'm not available for. But we're going on a couple of visits that Allison set up of some other facilities that are doing the similar work for their employees. And I'm really pleased with the progress of that's going on, and commend Allison and Jason. The other thing that came up this week is I came upon a pilot program. It's a federal government pilot program that's being directed towards counties that are, have the ability to fund folks that would may need to go into nursing facilities, but be able to use, stay at home. I contacted Jason and of course, he was all on top of it, knew exactly what was going on. He's putting the proposal through. And as usual, he's right on top of everything. And that's why we have such a wonderful long-term care facility.
Very good. I, so for me, you see my, my liaisons, they actually did a full report and we pass that on to both commissioners. And I'll let them, when it comes to the final updates, let them go over there, their list with everybody. So with that, I'm going to move on to Finance Office, Chuck Nickerson. We're going to discuss something in Moody's issue of rating. Andy Murphy, Chuck, take it away.
So basically, when we had issued our own county debt, and the last time we actually did that was 2013 for the series of bonds then. Now that those bonds have matured, the last payment was done in May. Moody's is not like obligated just to do like a freebie kind of rating on us. Because we've gone with the bond bank for the last three borrowings is the bond bank that works with Moody's as far as making, you know, as far as their own debt rate. Because technically, we sell our bonds to the bond bank. Bond bank does the bigger issuer issuances every six months in the Series A and Series B. If we're ever to want to not utilize the bond bank for any sort of, I mean, it would be good to have a Moody's rating so that when we go out to bid, if we were to issue our own debt, that potential, you know, bidders would have a rating that they could rely on and independent rating such as Moody's. It's $3,000 based upon what our current, it's based upon what current debt level is. Right now, it's like they start at 50 million and less. That's the $3,000. Then they go another chunks, 50 millions, 100 million, or what have you. So I didn't know if commissioners, because they want like an answer now, if they're going to do a rating on us. And, and we do have $11,000. So we, we actually have budget in a bond, like a bonding cost line on the general government. And so there are, you know, there's ample funds there. If we do, just, just in case, want to have this in case, for whatever reason, we have a need to borrow for whatever amount, and for whatever reason, bond bank doesn't want, you know, doesn't want to accept us selling our debt to them for larger issuance. So I just wanted to pose out to the board because they, Moody's wants basically yes or no answer. They gave us all one week extra because I was out on vacation. So for $3,000 is what they were charged for to do another rating. We do have a good rating right now as far as a mid-one. So that's, that's good as far as their rating scheme. So.
What is our current rating?
Mid-one. They do different, it's double A1 as far as for the regular rating, you know, ratings that we're, we're used to hearing.
It's like who the state's rating is. Okay, thank you. Discussion, go ahead.
Well, I'm unclear. Who rated us? And what is the top rating if where it'll?
Big one is for Moody's. So we're at the top for, for Moody's ratings. The A1 isn't the highest one as far as the, the regular one, but it's very much up there. For, you know, whether it's Dunn's or wherever you, you look at, you know, you might, it's like federal government got downgraded by Fitch, you know.
So are we already rated by Moody's?
Yes, but they're, they're saying that now that we paid off our last bit of the debt that we had issued, they're going to stop rating us unless we pay.
Awesome.
So, so.
So this is to continue being rated by Moody's?
Yes.
And is it something that you recommend?
I would recommend as a just in case, and we do annually budget $11,000 in a borrowing cost line. That covers things such as ratings or financial analyses. If we have to employ, the top securities, you know, they're a very popular financial advisor. If ever we had need of their services related to borrowings. Also, if we have to utilize bond counsel for anything at all, that also comes out of that same line. So, you know, for $3,000, is that, you know, too much for a peace of mind as a just in case? Because if we were going to issue our own debt again, and we want to maximize the number of bids we get, it would be helpful to have independent rating out there. So.
So Chuck, question. We have a second on this. Do you know if fires soon?
We, well, it's a little bit further. We had the borrowing, I think it was 2018. So we have a little bit further to go. We had a, we had one to trans, well, $3 million to finish off the long-term care renovation project. We only borrowed three out of a $12 million project. So that was good. We saw some years left on that one. We have the 2018 Series A one that was for the transitional period for going from, because we didn't want to suss more from the taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah.
So that one should be 2028. I believe the other one might be more like it's like 2026, 2027 as far as the $3 million.
Okay.
So we have $5 million that we had gone for doing the 18-month transitional fiscal period. And then of course, we've got the $25 million that we, we had from, from last January, last February. Technically, we got the money as far as for the, towards the building.
All right, further discussion?
I think it's like a fair, you know, it's short money to have the insurance plan. It's like buying insurance. It's a potential thing.
Commissioner Godu.
I agree. I think it's a good idea that we anticipate what the movie's rating.
Looks like it's a go.
Okay, thank you. I'll get back to them.
You got a little bit of that in the budget spending.
So three will still leave a bit left if we had any other need, if other costs came up.
Right. And should we put that in the motion?
I think we do. Yeah, I was planning to that. So I move to just, move to approve the expenditure of $3,000 to continue our Moody's rating and authorize the Senior Director of Finance to sign all necessary documents to execute that.
Second, motion been made and seconded? If we already had this time.
$3,000.
This is three, $3,000 even.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right. Well, human resources. Pull your attention and engagement.
I move to approve an employee retention and engagement activity for third shift and weekender employees for Jersey Mike's utilizing the category 235 of the.
We have a second. Second, is there any discussion?
I was just, I do, I thought we used wellness dollars for the smoothie bus. It was just, you said. I'm sorry, I don't know. Just. I thought the smoothie bus we used the wellness dollars for, which is, it's not, it may have, BS, that would have been on the signal. Yes, the signal wellness. This isn't well, oh, I know. I was more concerned that you said in your, I was looking at the support. I said we used funds from Alba. And I didn't think that was the case. And I, I'll double check what Justin may have gotten it wrong, but I'll go back and check on that. It's not consequential for this.
Smoothies are healthier than Jersey Mike's.
In this instance, we had a bunch of wellness, signal wellness dollars to utilize. And I thought this was the smoothie buzz built into that category. And I'm trying to, I think at this point, you know, in terms of being cognizant of how we're using our money with respect.
Yeah, it makes sense. We need to figure out where.
Yeah, I'll ask her. I'm sorry about that. No, it's not a check here. Okay. But with respect to this, it looks like the total cost is going to be about $1,700. And it's nice to make sure we give acknowledgement to those third shift and the drills who don't actually, you know, always get to access some of the programs. So I'm in support of it. Thanks. No, the other.
Does that include dispatches too?
It does.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We did all the shifts that I could think of.
On the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Just catch exception request.
I move to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy 7-3, new appointment rate for a long-term care services employee ME as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Well, you're a second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care services, Health Drive.
I move to approve two agreements with Health Drive Podiatry Group PC for services with rehabilitation and nursing center and the Ernest P Barker assisted living facility effective August 1st, 2023, continuing until terminated by either party. And further authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Well, you're a second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussions? Commissioner Godu?
The contracts, I think, need to be looked at again. The only problem that I found was that the contract is by and between the, it says long-term care facility and the service providers, and it should say County of Rockingham, at least according to the PRIMEX review. County of Rockingham should be the, the governing body that we have contracted. And I believe it says, well, to each one, there's two different ones. One lists Rockingham County Rehabilitation and Nursing Center. The other one lists Ernest P Barker ALF. And PRIMEX very specifically said the party should be County of Rockingham. So I would prefer to comply with what PRIMEX recommends.
I assume that was just, we could just add that, you know, it's like the header is County of Rockham, subheader is the, you know, where it is.
I, I understand what you're saying. It sounds like the same thing, but PRIMEX lawyers specifically called that out because they, that was the language that was presented to them. And they specifically said, it should not be this. It should be the County of Rockingham. And I think that, I think it would be wise that we follow their recommendation.
And just to add on, on that, specify New Hampshire, because Rockingham County.
Yes, yeah, obvious. But they brought it up on the prime. They just copied whatever PRIMEX said to do.
Right.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jason.
I'm fine with making that change. It's fine. Other contracts that we already have established with, with this particular organization, we have it for just the particular building name, such as Rockingham County Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. I'm fine with making the change though. Absolutely. The purpose of this contract is because our previous podiatrist has non-responded to many requests to come in now. So we don't have a podiatrist. And so I'm trying to get service for both communities to fulfill that. So I'm happy to make this change. I can do this immediately. So we can get this moving forward, if that's appropriate, Commissioner.
I think we could just move to approve the agreements with the county that, that adjustment be made to add Rockingham County to the, so I, I make that amendment to my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. There's amendments to include the PRIMEX notes. Jason is going to redo that.
So on the motion, I'll second the amendment to the motion.
All right. So now on the, on the, on the amendments. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle, I vote yes. On the motion, with the amendment, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, thanks, Jason. So we're, you're at the final dance. Okay, I'm going to go.
No, you missed a one.
What's that?
D. Okay, land, lack construction property. So, so mine, I was involved. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we just did that. All right, so I'll, I'm going to go to Jason Henry.
Okay.
First, because I usually rate the last for Jason, but I'm going to let him go first this time. Morning.
You need your.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe I need to unmute. That would be helpful. Tuesday, I went up to Grafton to sit on their oral boards for superposition. That went very well. I wish them luck and they had at least two very strong candidates. I'd like to thank the commissioners for when they approved for us to getting new vests. Those are in. They fit very well and staff's very happy. So now we have vests that are actually, you know, in compliance for our transports, which is helpful. We have five new people coming on board here for the next couple of weeks, which is great. It's actually a pretty large group for us. Dealing with ACLU, looks like New Futures wants to add a bunch of language to RS A30B on more Medicaid assisted treatment and mental health stuff. It's going to cause an unfunded mandate. So I'm currently working with ACLU back and forth. We'll see how that goes. That's all I got right now. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jason. Kathy Stacy?
Morning, guys. Good morning, everybody. Not much to report. We got some pretty big transactions that took place this past week. 3.2 million in Rye cash deal. The old courthouse sold for 13.5 million cash deal. And then we have one in Londonderry, four and a half million. So it's, you know, we have a lot of commercial stuff going. Not too much residential. But other than that, you know, we have a lot of staff out. It's, it's obviously vacation time and everybody's, you know, pulling their weight and taking, you know, doing what we need to do. I will be, just so that you know, this afternoon, I am the association rep for the Retirement Benefits Commission. It's going to start work on the proposals that happened last year that got, you know, retained. So I'll be doing that. And I did go to Texas. It was excruciatingly hot. I don't know who was the brainiac who said, let's have a conference in Austin, Texas in July, because I'd like to kick them in the butt. It just, it just was so terrible. It was so terrible. But, but the, but, but the, obviously, a lot of stuff came out. I've got some stuff for Jason Henry, some information. It, it was kind of interesting stuff with regards to opioids and things like that and whatever. I, but I forwarded that to Jason and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Robin, turn here. Morning, Rob.
Morning, everybody. Same old thing with the IT. We've got a lot of programs, a lot of processes we're putting in place, upgrading, things like that. So every day we just keep going at it and things are starting to come together. So it's really good.
Thanks, Robin. Jason Smith?
Good morning, Commissioners. As Commissioner Foyle mentioned, yes, we do have a little outbreak going on. We're doing testing again today. Thus so far, we've had no new positive cases. So I'm thinking that we've caught this early through our contact tracing and interventions that we have in place. So we're looking forward to getting out of this very shortly. We had a fun time, the residents did, at York Beach, and they ate at Fox's and they had their lobster rolls. So that was fun. And again, I just want to say thank you so much for allowing us to have the bus. The residents are really enjoying not only going to their medical appointments and getting there on time and having their appointments, but also enjoying some fun such as outings like this. So thank you so much for allowing that to happen. Let's see here. The transition to our new pharmacy, Health Direct, has been very, very good. The staff have been very happy so far. We're actually getting medications on time and we're getting the right meds for the right residents now. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a good thing so far. Meds on time and delivery. And they're actually picking up the phones in the office at the pharmacy now. So it's just been a fresher breath there. And I'm just keeping my fingers crossed. So hopefully all is well with that. I'll keep you posted if there's any further issues. And also, I am digging through the RFP for the pilot program to delay or defer institutional care. I'm, there's a meeting today with the County Nursing Homophilia Group at 10:00 AM. So I'm going to be joining that. There's going to be a guest speaker to talk about the requirements for this. I'm looking at different ideas. Um, the only thing that I can really think about is supporting and continuing to support, um, the program with our adult day, um, partners. Uh, so looking at that to see if that's a feasibility thing that we can do. They are requiring lots of information, statistics, area codes, age population. So, um, already reached out. I mean, thank you Chuck for allowing us to work with Emily, the grant writer, and, um, Jessica Wendell here, Public Relations and Community Outreach. So we're looking at, um, seeing if this is something that would work for the community and how that would kind of play out. Um, the deadline is the twenty-fifth, so we have a bit of a time crunch, but we have some ideas. And so we'll look at it, um, to see if it's, uh, a possibility to make it a real thing. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Just wanted to note for the record, we have, um, this Bill Cato is also Julie Nelson. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Jude Gates.
Good morning. I sent over, as you noted, a lengthy briefing, scintillating stuff, all. Um, all's well in facilities. We're very busy. Um, building's going well, still dealing with some permitting issues, but all the work that's being done thus far is, um, going very well.
Good. Let me hear that.
Thank you.
Um, Allison?
Um, yeah, I was able to get, um, an update too. Um, I spent a little bit of time on the, um, child capability study. Um, we also do have somebody from the Licensing Bureau that will come out on September seventh to kind of talk about the process and what it would look like, maybe tour, uh, our building a little bit on the ground floor here. Um, but I have connected in and I know who our resource will be on this side because they have territory. It's broken down by territory. So they've been very helpful in just, uh, providing information and, um, stuff like that. We have worked on the motivate me. Um, the monies are gonna occur in the eight, eighteen. That's for anybody that, um, participated in motivate me and, um, submitted their stuff for that. Um, we've just, I've had a couple of things related to trying to, um, firm up our harassment discrimination training. We've had a couple pop-up things that Chuck and I have worked with on some things that may require discussion with the board about MOU's potential. Uh, the facilities use policy was kind of crafted up and we did get that off and, um, buy it back from Primax with those changes. So that'll go before the board coming up. And I think UKG, we've had some issues with implementation. We had a great call with, uh, our liaison there, um, Ben Wing, Chuck, myself and Julie, and we feel like we've resolved some, uh, concerns. And I look forward to re-engaging with them now that they have a little bit of a lift, uh, that Julie and Ben will bring together. Um, but we want to make sure that we're on the right path with them still. I've been invited to participate as the HR panelist for the Long-Term Care Summit on August first. Um, it's around, it's now the topic that we would have, um, some talk about that I would be participating in would be on workforce topics and kind of what, um, sets us apart is a little bit what Rockingham County is doing. Um, I've also asked, asked that Autumn Newsom, um, participate on that as well because I think she's been a fantastic resource as far as recruitment and understanding the, um, populations, uh, workforce populations. So she'll be on that panel with me. We have a call today with David Ross from Houshaw County and the Hampshire Association of Counties Danielle Jashane to go over, uh, everybody that's gonna participate on the panel. So it's been a busy week.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent.
Joe? Uh, just continue to be busy. Uh, we did have, um, dispatch interviews last week. We got a lot of candidates and that's thanks to Autumn. She does a great job recruiting. Uh, we have two that we're training right now. Just, it's summertime. We're busy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, do you want to add anything at all?
Good. Thank you.
You're good?
Yeah.
Chuck, Nickersons?
Um, well, back from my guest vacation number two, so, but yes, uh,
Yeah, right?
So, yeah, that'll be it probably till next June. I just. Um, but, uh, you know, things are, are well. Um, basically got through July as far as having all the different quarterly filings and everything. Our, um, ARPA recovery plan thing that Treasury requires is under other reports on our website. It's now grown to twenty-four pages with all the different projects that we have going on. So that's like the long form narrative of the ARPA projects and the other separate portal filing was the nitty-gritty data kind of filing piece. So that was, it was a fun Monday to finish that up. Uh, all the other quarter, quarterly filings got done. Um, yes, Emily's been working on, on that, uh, grant possibility, but it is kind of interesting how the state finally gets done doing the rules making, then everyone else has to run around to try to satisfy doing the grant applications within the month after they issue out, you know, that the application period is open.
It's incredibly cumbersome in terms of the amount of data that needs to be provided for the grant application. So it seems like a little, it's, it's so challenge. I mean, it's almost like, because they give such a short window with so much demand on data. It, it makes you wonder, it's like.
I can report, um, some good news that with the most recent GNC meeting that our Epping Meadows product, project is approved to go forward. Um, so the CDFA will be awarding, um, the five hundred thousand dollars for those CDBG funds for that project. So that will be moving forward. So that's good news there. Yes, that's the official approval for that to continue on forward with CBG funding. Um, so, you know, hopefully now in a couple of years, hopefully that can maybe subtly help out the counties of its workforce because it's supposed to be affordable housing.
Right.
So we'll, uh, we'll see how that goes. Um, yes, we had a good call with UKG on Friday, so, um, hopefully we'll be making some better progress with that. Um, you know, we had a good follow-up email too from the individual at UKG who, who hosted the call. So, um, I shouldn't say hosted a thousand hours, but anyways, it went, it went well. Um, we, yes, we had our munis closed for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so now we'll really go forward on, uh, getting our own internal, like, um, statements to be audited by the independent auditors. Obviously now the clock starts ticking on cost reports as well. So Medicaid cost report which is due September, so we're working on that. We might still see if we can at least enlist to some degree the aid of an outside audit firm with preparing that instead of kind of going so-called cold turkey on doing our own hundred percent fully submitted to, uh, to Medicaid this time around. So, um, also just, I have, if all the department heads saw this and the division directors liked the officials, but it's the official effective date, I believe is August thirtieth, that I've been told as far as for the bid threshold to go from the five thousand to the ten thousand.
Okay, so at the end of the month?
Yes, yes. It, you know, I know that the government had many bills to sign and fortunately the one that we're looking to hopefully be in the front end ended up being more so. Um, but overall, just, just good to be back and we're busy as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Leila, is there anything you have that you want to share?
Um, yeah, sure. Thank you. Um, so I reached out, um, Joe, Joe Walsh, formerly of Onion's Office. Um, she did a great job, uh, creating a spreadsheet with all of our vehicles for me. So I was able to finalize everything and realize TD Equipment Partners had sent us six vehicle titles yet that came off at least March third. So I reached out to them. They're looking into it. Um, I'm working on an out-of-state travel and training request form. Um, so I'm really putting that, uh, on the website once it's approved. Um, and I'll be accepting proposals for CDBG administration for the Epping Meadows project, I mean, you know, until August twenty-fourth. So that's moving forward. That's great. That's great news.
And that's it.
Thank you, Leila. Thank you. I hope I pay your attention to the detail of all those details.
I'm gonna ask, I just see Julie's in the room. I'm gonna ask her, do you have anything that you'd like to? You're all set. Okay, thank you. I'll make sure that we did get an opportunity. So we're, did I get everybody? Okay. Great. Okay, so we're gonna go on to new business, old business. And we have in front of us the, to walk in Lucky Eight Concrete Brick Media LLC agreement, agreement.
And move to approve the Concrete Brick Media LLC agreement and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second, what's been made in a second? Is it a discussion?
Uh, Commissioner, go ahead. Yeah, there's very brief section that says that we can use clips, uh, upon written approval. Doesn't say what we can use the clips on. Um, have you had discussion with the, uh, with these folks? And I guess they're not called Lucky Eight anymore. And you changed the name on the contract to whatever they're currently called?
Yes, Concrete Brick Media LLC.
Yeah. Now, as, as for the clips, we're pretty much there. We can use as, as we see fit is what they kind of told me. You know, for recruiting or we won't put it out there on, you know, that's why we have to, the written permission for them back and forth. Um, but they're pretty flexible. That would be able to use, um, some of their stuff for however we want to put it out there.
And I think the ambiguity.
Probably also.
Yeah, it's in a, yes. Um, my concerns were just more tied to less this contact button, the, some of the media release uh, aspects. And, um, I talked to Jason and I spoke and, you know, going forward, what we're gonna do, we'll, you know, Lucky or Concrete Brick Media LLC will have their own release for media release, but we will also draft our, the county will have our own separate release. So, um, that was the area in which I was at your, um, sedation and this contact per se. So, um, we'll just, you know, this is step one. There are a number of steps down the road, but that's how I think.
What? Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, in the contract under insurance, we didn't exactly follow the Primex recommendation of, uh, changes. Uh, they, we added a word in aggregate. There was no word aggregate that was, uh, mentioned in Primex. And additionally, it said ensures to be insurers, insurance to the commercial general liability insurance and Primex specifically called out this should say general automa- automotive liability insurance. I think that we should be following Primex's recommendations as precisely. And they had left out a, um, it was a clause that they removed, um, combined some single, oh, no, that was, um, my mistake. The aggregate part is, is what they recommended. The only word that's missing is automotive.
Jason, do you have any comment on that at all?
I'm sure I can get, I'm sure I can add automotive.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's the only thing that, that, that's missing that. And I'm, I, I'm no expert. We sent it to Primex. They're the ones who said they put it in. I don't even know why it should be, except that I want to follow what they're saying.
Yeah, if you amend the motion with that in there, I'm sure I can get it changed.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, amend the motion to add the word, uh, automotive reference to liability insurance as recommended by Primex.
Second.
Yeah, so on the amendment, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Do I do?
Yes.
I vote yes. On the motion with the amendment, unless there's more discussion. Um, Commissioner, do I do?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes. All right. So we're also on that one. Uh, you're gonna go publicly comment? I'm, I'm sorry.
New business?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
I, I have a couple of things. One, um, we had, there's some discussion of the facilities use agreement. And I know that next week we are going to have the actual agreement on our agenda. Um, I had a discussion with the organization that was hoping to, um, when come here utilize the IT system we have here. And I spoke to Robin about that and inherently that is some issues with respect to like, we don't want an outside group using the IT equipment independently. So one idea I had, and I spoke to Robin about this, and maybe that, you know, it's at the will of, um, the IT department, that if a group wants to use the equipment that we have, they would have to be, they would pay overtime to the, an IT employee to operate and use the equipment. So kind of you guys, I guess I'm just opening it up for discussion on how people feel about it. And then, you know, um, we could add that to the facilities use agreement that, and it's, it's at the discretion of the anyone in the IT department who's going to utilize it. So if they're, you know, a group makes schedules use of the building and there's no one to operate it for whatever reason, and then the secondary part that would require finance in terms of payment, you know, it's more complicated in terms of payment for the overtime, things like that, if we're, if the board's inclined to.
I would, I would agree. Um, I think that we can set a fee that doesn't have to reference overtime and getting to the technical aspects of how we would deal with payroll.
Yeah.
It's a hundred dollar charge or two hundred, whatever, fifty dollars an hour or whatever is appropriate. We can, uh, discuss that. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement. If they want to use our equipment and then I bring it in their own equipment, then we should be operating it and make sure it doesn't get damaged.
Oh.
I know we've put a fee in there based on the discussion you previously had for like the room use at seventy-five dollars. So this would be a sub.
In addition, yeah, right. Because that could be added.
Really, if we're having a, if someone, if an employee wants to work overtime hours, then we should sort of encapsulate, we would need to cap, encapsulate, um, you know, the overtime rate plus rollups because I, I don't think that the county should be incurring any costs associated with that, but I don't know. Robin, do you have anything you wish to add or care to?
No, I, I think that you hit all the topics. I mean, the biggest thing is keeping our network safe and that cabinet where all of our equipment is stored, you know, is a direct link into the entire network of the county. So, uh, to, to leave it unlocked and available to someone without some of our staff here would just be, uh, would not be a good idea. So we're happy to help, happy to set things up. We're happy to assist, um, any of the folks that do come in. We just need a little bit of notice and then we'll, we'll make our schedules work around it. We'll figure it out.
Between now and the time that we approve this, we, you can figure out what that number will be?
Yeah, yeah. And then again, it would just be exclusively at the discretion of the employee to take on the overtime. So, you know.
So on, on that topic, um, related, you mentioned that, that we, we haven't agreed to anything yet, but the proposal is to charge seventy-five dollars for.
Discretion of the board for, you know, a certain specific population like that you just determined. So, yes.
So we're talking like the Hilton auditorium potentially?
I don't know that Jason would authorize the use of the training room upstairs, but I, I think it's just the Hilton.
I think we should just make the Hilton accessible and everything for else because there's too many places of, I mean, there's a security issue.
Yeah, we don't want people.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, signing in and all sorts of, if we're in an out, there outbreak or some other issue, I think that we, I feel most comfortable just limiting it to the Hilton because it's a large space and whether you have a small group or a large group.
It's an appropriate space close to the.
It has separate access. Yeah. So I think that would be the, I don't think we should expand it.
Jason and I, you can go back to just maybe some edits. Chuck can talk to us so I can import some information around that component and we'll get it back on the agenda if you don't mind for next week.
And we'll charge seventy-five dollars to use it.
Yeah, there's, there's some language in there, so you'd have to read that, uh, language about how that would be if you choose to build that route. But yeah, we're just almost there then. We sent it out to, uh, Primex. They gave us more of that uh, indemnification language and stuff like that, which was great. So we'll just take it back and make some edits then. And Chuck, you can help us with the financial piece.
Yeah, Jason, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I believe nonprofits, uh, there was no fee, uh, for nonprofit groups. And that seventy-five dollars, um, was an optional thing, um, with board approval to waive. Um, but you, you know, it's the housekeeping staff setting up the room, setting up the tables, the chairs, taking that down and cleaning the room before and after the, the reservation. So I know that that was kind of to, uh, help offset labor charges as well.
Okay. So now in the, in the write-up proposal, we do have classroom B two oh four with capacity of thirty-three and the atrium capacity two twenty-four. Are we, are we gonna check those off? Get rid of those?
It's up to the board.
I, I would.
I think at this time, why don't we just, I mean, if, I, to me, I think we should take a, you know, step-by-step approach, which is let's limit, reduce, limit it to the Hilton for now. See how it goes. See how the, if there's increased use, what our demand is, if there's. If there's, if we're talking to the community, if the community is reaching out to anyone here and saying, listen, we need.
One to me.
Uh, yeah, or something else isn't, you know, a need isn't a method. Maybe we can help out with and we can take that on and make an amendment, but.
Okay, I was just curious because that's in there. Um, any further discussion at all?
About this.
Yeah, about this. All right, so I think we, I think that gives us a little bit more. We'll see that coming up maybe next week. Allison, you think?
Yeah, um, yeah, because it's small language that we have to, it's just Chuck can give us what he thinks the fee could be for that. That would be helpful.
All right, thank you.
And then the second issue I had was um some discussion around rental car usage at for conferences. And I, I'm thinking about it in the context of liability and if we're sending a. Someone uh to a conference and they want to use a rental car. And then use that rental car for personal time and the county's exposure and liability. So I think that, you know, we should have a special, like if there's. Either there's a special request for a rental car. Most often what we're seeing is for these conferences is, you know, we're staying at a. Um, you know, the conference in the hotel are often at conference centers that there isn't a lot of need. But for going from to and from the airport and more often than not in quotes, from a fiscal perspective as well as the liability perspective. There's public, there's other transportation options. Um, I put it out there because I'm thinking about the liability of having, you know, rental car use and potential. How are we differentiating what's county time use of the rental car versus personal time and our, our exposure?
So, so for me, oh, I'm going to, I was going to say for me, I, I uh, I don't really see the benefit of. Of allowing a a car rental because like you had mentioned, most of these conferences are a couple of days. They're usually in big cities. We take a mover and and we have to seek for um. That way, that takes, well, for me. We backed up. So last week we actually had uh in front of us a proposal for a conference. With uh with a car rental and we, we basically said, no, we don't believe the car rental was necessary yet and we just stripped it out. So I'm not really looking for any uh actual policy because it's going to come from us for improvement anyway. We can always strip that up like we just did last week. But I'm in agreement to the fact that um I, you know, I don't really see a need for. For a rental car. Most of the time that's going to be for personal use and then if, you know, person, if they want to do it, they do it on their own. So that's how I do it.
Yeah, no, I agree. We do have to approve the conferences and I think that uh we should suggest that uh. Employees of the county do not rent a car, at least on behalf of the county. That eliminates our liability. Regarding uh uh anything that might happen. They got an accident with an uninsured vehicle. Um, it, nothing comes back on us. It's got nothing to do with us. We're not even reimbursing them for a car rental. Of course, they want to do that on their own. That's their business.
Right.
And that's fine. Uh, we'll reimburse them for transportation to and from the conference. And uh I think that, I I don't know that you need to put it in a formal policy, but we can just. Announce to everybody, we're not renting cars, you know.
Now, on that rare, rare occasion where someone requests one, they can come in front of the board and make their case.
Right.
Any other new business that anyone wants to bring up?
You have any openings? Okay, go ahead.
I meant to just let you know that um the podcasts are up. Um, with the exception of Spotify and Apple, uh, Apple tunes, which um Autumn has reached out to Robin. To get access to, to launch them, but all three went out at the same time. So I'm excited to be able to have everybody look at those and um. That and the new business I had, I had one item. Um, our submission for motivate me, the deadline to get it in was July twenty eighth. We did have one group that had issues um of mail delivery to them because they're not in our building. They're, you know, on the other end of town. And so they came over Monday morning and I had two from uh the sheriff's office that came over. And I'd just like to process this over. The end date is done. We won't accept anymore. It just was a lag time between the weekend and getting to our office Monday morning. So we might have permission from the board to process also. I appreciate it. Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, so um I just want to, before I go to public comment, I do want to bring up the fact that I do want to go with the non meeting. Uh, at the end, uh after non-public or an issue that I wanted to bring up in front of the commissioners. So. Um, just to let you know, um.
What category is it, non meeting?
Uh, I guess it would be. Negotiations.
Union negotiations. Oh.
Yes. I'll, I'll bring that up in non meeting. But anyway, um, is there any more, um, all right, I'm going to ask for public comment this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this range at the end or? Or let me know that you want, wish to speak. Yes.
Commissioner Bill Cale, teams is um, as you're aware, we have several contracts representing uh different uh units within the. Um, county, but at this time, I just want to let the commissioners know that the teams is. Uh sincerely appreciate the openness and uh approachability of all your department heads. Uh, we may not agree on issues from day to day, but the fact of the matter is their openness and transparency. Uh, helps us try to maintain uh labor harmony and it's much appreciated and I think you should be aware of that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Former Commissioner Foyle, do you have anything?
So I've been here for ten plus years. I was just wondering one time if they, if a, the department head would actually say. We're not really busy.
Only in our dreams.
It's been quiet.
How about former Commissioner Tom Morello? Do you have anything you want to say? Nope, you're all set. Okay, so then uh thank you, everybody. We're going to go into non-public. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have.
Not busy. They're going to be laying off a lot of people.
All right, next, hey, next week, if you, hey, next week you get here, I'll just say that.
You want to take us into?
Well, the change is clear.
Yes. You will, I, Allison, yes.
So. So they have thirteen total slots.
Second, and we had uh five different non-public topics. So I'm going to go through. E- enumerate each one with a um motion of sealing. So with respect to the first non-public, I move. Um, those, I'm just going to say the ones. The first ones does not need to be sealed. The second topic, uh I move. And the third topic, I move to seal indefinitely because it affects the, um, in one instance, their. Reputation and or strategy of um. Uh, of the individual others on the board.
So on motion two.
And two and three.
Two and three, we have a motion to seal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, on that motion, Commissioner Guadu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
On the fourth topic, I move to seal those minutes for ninety days until um a resolution because I feel, we feel that that. Issue will be resolved and can be unsealed within ninety days.
Second, maybe the second to for item four to be nine, nine, facility for ninety days. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Guadu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And on this final issue, um, at this point, I um, I'd move to seal. For um ninety days as well to um reach a resolution in this, which we anticipate.
Second, which we made a seconded on the motion, Commissioner Guadu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. And that's, that's it. Is there nothing else to be in front of us? Any motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.